All right, can I get a motion to adjourn from an executive session and return to regular business?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second. Commissioner DeGru, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, carries. So we have, we're in executive session and we discussed a couple of things, first being us authorizing the acceptance of notice of retirement and execution of a re-release by in between the county of Sussex and Ron Tappin, our county administrator. That's our first one. Our second will be, I guess we'll do, go one at a time?
Yeah, you have to go one at a time.
Okay, all right, so, can I get a motion to authorize the acceptance of the notice of retirement and exec- execution of release by in between the county of Sussex and Ron Tappin, county administrator?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGru, any discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank Ron for his numerous years of service to Sussex County. He started out, that I know of, I don't know where he actually started out in Sussex County, but he was central in shared services, and then we had the opportunity to hire him three years ago, and I want to thank him for all he's done, and I'm gonna miss him, and I wish him well in his retirement.
Yes, anybody else?
Ron was a wealth of information for me, coming onto the board. I wish him all the best in whatever he pursues, and happy retirement.
Yep. Good. Yeah, I would like to, I've known Ron for three years now and he did a good job here, so good luck to him in his retirement. I know his wife just retired, so I'm sure they're gonna do a little traveling, and I hope to see him soon. So, motions on the table, we have a second roll call for that.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
All right, with that being said, I have another resolution. This is for the appointment of Christina Marks as interim county administrator for the county of Sussex, whereas there presently existed vacancy in the office of Sussex County Administrator, and whereas there's a need to appoint a qualified person as interim administrator of the county of Sussex pursuant to NJSA 40A:9-42 in Article 3.2 of the Sussex County Administrative Code, 1989, last revised September 2019, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of the County Commissioners of Sussex County does hereby appoint Christina Marks interim county admin in accordance with the emergent provisions of NJSA 34:6B-231A and until its successor administrator is appointed. If it further is resolved that from and after October 23rd, 25, is authorized and directed to fulfill all the duties and responsibilities of the position of interim county administrator pursuant to NJSA 40A:9-42 in Article 3 of the Sussex County Administrative Code. Guys got all that? All right, well, can I get a motion to appoint Christina Marks as interim county administrator for the county of Sussex? Deputy Director Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Okay. Number eight is a public hearing. This is our final adoption of ordinance 25-06. At a regular meeting held on October 8th, 2025, we introduce for first reading the following ordinance which was advertised in a New Jersey Herald and a Star Ledger issue of October 14th, 2025, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. This is the ordinance establishing local park hours and procedures for unattended property. Motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, Commissioner DeGru, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no one, motion that the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson moves, Commissioner DeGru, seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right, carries, motion that the ordinance be finally adopted.
So moved.
Commissioner DeGru, have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining carries. All right, can I get a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also pose same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson? Deputy Director Space, seconds, any, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden is absent, Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Okay, number nine is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding the agenda item. Please line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, Commissioner DeGru, seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining carries. Public comments open on agenda topics?
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. My question is about number fourteen appointments, the resolution appointing James Baldini to Sussex County. I just had some questions about that, and the process seemed to me to seem very vague. The request didn't come out till September twenty-second, and someone has already been approved, and there was nothing even in there about the time period for applying or anything, which I thought seemed rather unusual. And so I guess my question would be, how much due diligence was done with this? And I hope it was, I hope there was some, because I know in the past, you people have said that there have been some problems with the board at the vote tech. And so it just seems to me that it was very, done very quickly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number ten, commissioners' comments, Commissioner Henderson, you want to start?
Okay, mine are pretty brief tonight. On October tenth, I along with deputy administrator Lorraine Hens attended an NJAC meeting in Morris County where administrators, commissioners, and others shared their concerns. I found it very ironic that no matter what size county or population, we all share the same concerns, funding cuts, health insurance, and volunteers to cover fire and medical calls. On October fifteenth, I attended the S U M A meeting, better known as the County Landfill and Waste Water Management Meeting. Also on the fifteenth, I attended Sussex County Community College fundraiser. It was a very successful event, over two hundred tickets were sold for the event, and I will say it's probably one of the best events I've been to. On September eighth, I along with Deputy Director Space attended the twelfth Annual Flag Retirement Ceremony at the Veteran Cemetery in Sparta. It's a very moving event, after the ceremony, you're giving bags of ashes from the previous year's flags to scatter on the graves of the vets. Commissioner Space scattered hers on the grave of nine-one-one supervisor Shannon Thanis, and I on the grave of my former colleague, Hardeston Police Chief Brett Alamein. On Sunday, the nineteenth, I attended Vernon Township unveiling of their newly installed town clock. If you're going on five fifteen in Vernon, please take note of their clock, it's absolutely gorgeous. I'd like to say to Mayor Rossi and all those involved, well done, it was strictly funded by donation and a lot of dedicated hard work by individuals from their community, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DeGru?
Yep, good evening, everyone. First, I attended the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, NJTPA Subcommittee Meeting for both the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Project Prioritization Committee. We received an update on the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program, which is now accepting applications for round five through November seventh. I suggest municipalities across Sussex County take a look into it. We also reviewed the timeline for the upcoming fiscal year Unified Planning Work Program. Also, there's been a lot in the news recently about the Hudson Tunnel project, but during the meeting, NJTPA's executive director clarified that no official updates or funding announcements have yet been received from the U.S. Department of Transportation. That said, the NJTPA remains optimistic and ready to assist however needed. On a positive note, despite the ongoing situation at the federal level, NJTPA operations remain fully funded and no U.S. dot grants in our region have been canceled, so that's great. Second, I attended the monthly meeting for our beloved Sussex County Agricultural Development Board. The most exciting news was the memorialization of the official adoption of a resolution increasing the per acre compensation rate for two farms entering farmland preservation program. This marks another success for the new appraisal formula, which continues to prove effective in ensuring fair and competitive, competitive valuations. Now, it's a truly great time for farmers and landowners to explore preservation opportunities as they're seeing greater returns than in recent past. The board also reviewed a right to farm matter during the meeting. Moving on to our Sussex County Library System, take a glimpse into Sussex County's past with the Sussex County Library System Digital Collections. The Sussex County Library System has expanded its digital image collection with new sets of historic photos celebrating the county's people, art, and landmarks. Additions include the Lewis Larson nineteen sixty-five exhibit photos, Gingerbread Castle Collection, and Fred Kaderman's photograph collection. These collections showcase local art, one of Sussex County's most iconic attractions, and scenes of rural life from the nineteen seventies. According to librarian Tara, we're excited to keep expanding our digital offerings to preserve and share Sussex County's rich history. To explore the collections or learn more, visit sussexcountylibrary.org-local-history-deneology to check it out. Next, from the Division of Senior Services, I'd like to just highlight two upcoming programs. Caregiver Support Group, this division will host its next virtual meeting on Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, from two to three P M via Zoom. The group is designed to reduce caregiver stress, promote well-being, and provide helpful information about available programs and referrals. To register, please call nine seven three five seven nine zero five five five, extension twelve eighty-eight, Center of Lifelong Learning at SCCC, Sussex County Community College. In partnership with the Division of Senior Services, the center is offering two free lectures this fall, financially fit at any age, will, which will be on Thursday, October thirtieth, at three P M at the SCCC Performing Arts Atrium. Professors will share practical advice on budgeting, investing, and making smart financial choices. Second class, How to Spot a Scammer, which will be held on Thursday, November thirteenth, at three P M. Also in the Performing Arts Atrium, join students in SCCC's Law and Public Safety Program for an interactive session on recognizing scams and protecting your devices. Finally, had a pleasure of attending a few community events over the past two weeks. I was honored to serve as the keynote speaker at a joint agricultural forum between Warren County Community College and Sussex County Community College last Friday. It was an excellent forum around the conversation of keeping New Jersey the Garden State. Thank you to everyone who participated and those who coordinated the effort. Also attended Funding Their Future, an event supporting Sussex County Community Colleges last week, and I attended Father John's Animal Shelter's Pets Giving Fest held at Pope John High School, a great community gathering for a wonderful cause. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director Space?
Okay, we have the general election coming up, we have early voting location and times at the Cochran House, which is like a few doors down, eighty-three Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, Louise Child's Library, twenty-one Stanhope, Sparta Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, and the Wantage Library, sixty-nine County Road, six thirty-nine in Wantage, New Jersey, and the times are starting this Saturday from ten to eight, Sunday ten to six, and then Monday through Saturday, ten to eight, and Sunday, November second, ten to six. And election day is November fourth, and the polls are open six A M to eight P M. Visit the Board of Elections for more information. I have an update on where we stand with the homeless situation. The Department of Health and Human Services, the town of Newton spearheaded a series of meetings beginning at the end of August with municipal, county, and state partners to address a recent increase in homelessness, specifically in Newton. Sussex County officials have been partners in the initiative, along with the town, Newton Police Department, state officials from the Department of Community Affairs and Housing, medical and social service providers. A task force has been developed, and members are working quickly to attempt to house all identified individuals as well as connect them to services. As of now, there are individuals successfully being housed. Daily and weekly meetings are taking place, including planning for a cold blue shelter response for the upcoming winter season. So we are working hard with Newton and the Newton P D to take care of that. Division of Senior Services, the Twenty-Fifth Annual Salute to Military Veterans, Senior Services will host the Twenty-Fifth Annual Salute to Military Veterans Event in the Richards Building at the Sussex County Fairgrounds located at Thirty-seven Plains Road in Augusta on Sunday, November second, at one P M. Highlights of the day will include a parade, a prisoner of war and missing in action ceremony, and a twenty-one gun salute in addition to the reading of essays written by local students. The Sussex County Board of County Commissioners will present all veterans in attendance with a commemorative pin in recognition of their service. For additional information about this event, please call Division of Senior Services at nine seven three five seven nine zero five five five, extension thirteen eighty-two. And I have to give Lorraine a lot of credit for that because it is fantastic, Lorraine and her team are wonderful. Division of Senior Services Presentations, the Division of Senior Services is hosting a free presentation at the following two locations in November, the Franklin Library at one oh-three Main Street in Franklin on Thursday, November thirteenth, at two P M, and the Dorothy Henry Library, sixty-six Route ninety-four North in Vernon, Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at two P M. Join senior services staff to learn about the programs and services available to Sussex County seniors. Please contact the Division of Senior Services at nine seven three five seven nine zero five five, extension eleven thirty-five, to register or obtain additional information. A women's health screening clinic will be held on Thursday, November thirteenth, from four thirty to seven thirty at the Office of Public Health Nursing, two oh-one Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. This clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. This service is free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection Program. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at nine seven three five seven nine zero five seven zero, extension twelve seventy-five. And fifty-nine mosquito control, fifty-nine pools have been submitted for mosquito-borne disease testing during the month of October with zero positive pools found. On warmer days, residents should continue to take steps to avoid being bitten by infected mosquitoes by using EPA-registered insect repellents when outdoors wearing long-sleeve shirts and long pants and mosquito-proofing yards by emptying standing water after a rainfall event, which we really haven't had much. Cooler temperatures will not prevent mosquitoes from flying. Residents should continue preventative safety measures for mosquitoes for October. For more information, contact mosquito control at sussex nj.us backslash mosquito. And, somewhere. I attended the annual Sussex County Memorial Service hosted by the Sussex County Firemen's Association, where they honor all the firemen who passed away the last year in Sussex County. And then Alan already touched on Skuma's flag burning ceremony, and I have an update on the food pantry, and I wish that Commissioner Hayden was here, but he's not. The angel donor is not going to be donating at all next year, so we have to take that into consideration as we start our budget meetings this week. On Friday, we, Director Carney and I will be here all day, and on Monday, we do need to take that into consideration because we have to feed our residents.
And what was the loss for the donor?
Five hundred and fifty thousand a year in food that Sussex County Food Pantry will not receive. And we can thank them for all the years, I don't know the exact amount of years, but that's a huge donation in food, not money, so. Wish he was here so I could thank him that he has done one thing as he exits, and it's to take away food from those that need. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Just from the Department of Engineering and Planning, the Sussex County Bridge X forty-eight, Mottown Road in Wantage. Work is advancing on replacement of Sussex County Bridge X forty-eight located in Mottown Road in Wantage. Construction of the foundation system is nearing completion. The precast frame structure is scheduled for delivery late this week and or early next week. The Division of Engineering anticipates the frame will be installed by the end of next week. Once the frame is installed, the project is considered around thirty-five percent complete. Project remains on schedule with an anticipated return of service by mid to late December of this year. Sussex County Capital Guide Rail Program, work is scheduled to resume shortly on the county's ongoing capital guide rail replacement program. This two-point-four million dollar contract will upgrade guide rail along twenty-one miles of the county road. The remaining work will take place starting on County Route five nineteen, Ridge Road, and West End Avenue in Green, Freedon, and Newton, followed by guide rail upgrades on Decker Town, Turnpike, and Wantage, and Monique Townships. Work will, work will proceed under single-lane flagger-controlled work zones as weather permitted. Division of Planning is working with the Sussex County Ag Development Board to update Sussex County Four Season of Agricultural Interactive Mapping Application. The updated mapping application will support local agricultural businesses and agri-tourism efforts within the county. The application will provide users a one-stop source for information on farm products offered by local farmers, information on local farm markets, and schedules for agricultural events around the county. The Division anticipates the application will be live in early twenty twenty-six. Work will continue over the next few months developing the application and populate the interactive data and information. Local farmers and agricultural producers are encouraged to contact the Division of Planning if they like their farming operations, farm stands, or events to be included in the mapping application. The Division can be reached at nine seven three five seven nine zero five hundred. Like that, didn't you? DPW, Division of Public Works crews are preparing to begin site work for construction of public, new public health pole barn in Frankfurt. Weather permitting, Division of Public Works anticipates site work will begin by early November and continue into December. The Sussex County Division of Facilities Management is providing construction, inspection, and construction management for the period, which saves money to the taxpayer because it's staying in-house, so he's a positive. Department of Engineering Planning has been working with the Division of Public Works, Office of Bruton Traffic Safety, and the Division of Engineering to expand the in-house construction capabilities of the county. Efforts have focused on road and bridge construction projects with select assistance on county building site work. The department has expanded current operations and reassigned existing staff towards the operation of road construction crew, bridge construction crew, traffic safety crew, tree crew, guide rail construction crew, and stormwater construction crew. So far this year, the crews have been assigned thirty construction projects, completed twenty-five guide rail installations, and the tree crew has focused on removing distressed and hazard trees. The capability is expected to expand over the next few years as projects designs and are completed and crew capabilities refined. So again, this is something I've been working on for, as long as I've been here for five years, doing things in-house saves the taxpayer thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Give you an idea, a culvert bridge, which is a concrete structure, runs anywhere from about eight hundred thousand to one-point-two-five million approximately. We do that for about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty in-house. Years ago, they used to do about three bridges a year, my understanding, now we're down to about one, and basically what I just read is, we're gonna grow that, hire a couple more people, in the long term, save the money, save the money to the taxpayer and the county. That's the goal, and they're doing a good job doing that. That is all I have for now. Number eleven, approval consent agenda is none. Number twelve is the approval of minutes. This is a regular meeting, September twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and regular meeting, October eighth, twenty twenty-five. Got a motion to approve the minutes from the meetings?
So moved.
Deputy Director Space?
Second.
Moves. Commissioner DeGru, seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining carries. Thirteen's ordinance, there is no ordinance. Number fourteen's appointments and or resignations. Resolution A is appointment of James Baldini to the Board of Education of the Sussex County Technical School for a term of four years. Said term to begin November first, twenty twenty-five, and expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. Motion to adopt Resolution A.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner DeGru, any discussion? I have a little discussion. So just back to a question that Mrs. Brennan asked before. We had a resignation that just, we didn't expect. Once we got that resignation, we put it out, it's been out for about two months, right? We got minimal applicants. It's not easy, keep in mind, this was for a Republican, right? There's two Republicans and two Democrats.
We can't have more than two members of one particular party per statue.
Right, so this particular candidate had to be a Republican to be applicable. So, we had a few. We had two. Mr. Baldini was who we chose to bring up to the board for a vote. So just so we all understand that, that's where we're at. Next time, I think it'll be a Democrat, right? Unless somebody leaves, I guess, so.
It all depends on the vacancy.
Yes. Anyway, anybody else, any discussion on that before I call, roll call? Good, okay, roll call.
Commissioner Hayden is absent, Commissioner Henderson?
Abstain.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
And Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Okay. Fifteen's resolutions. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through L?
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, moves. Commissioner DeGru, seconds, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, just comment on Resolution F, right? So when I first joined the board on January 1st, 2024, I made it a priority to visit municipalities across the county as part of the Farmland Preservation Tour. During those visits, one recurring theme I heard from our municipalities was the need for stronger support for the open space stewardship, particularly that the existing trail grant program did not sufficiently, did not have sufficient funding to make it worth applying for. Taking those suggestions to heart, I'm proud with the work I've done alongside the Open Space Committee as liaison in 2024 to help foster the discussions that led to these proposed adjustments in Resolution F. I fully support the recommendations, and I'm especially pleased to see the updated award levels. Two, 25,000 for individual municipalities, 50,000 for joint projects, and the new collaborative category for large regional initiatives. A major improvement from what was previously available while also supporting shared services, which I know is near a dear to a lot of people on this board. These changes reflect the feedback I received from municipalities and demonstrate a thoughtful effort to grow the program responsibly, encouraging more impactful collaborative projects while reducing administrative burden. I believe this is a positive step forward in supporting both local and regional trail development throughout Sussex County. So just really excited to see this. I'm in support of it, and yeah, just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No? All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
All right. Sixteen's awards of contracts, change orders, and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract, change orders, bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public's interest. Motion to adopt Resolutions A through C.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
All right. Number seventeen's financial. We have two bills lists. This is the payment of Bills List A from October 22nd, 2025. Motion to pay Bills List A.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, Commissioner Degru, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
All right. Resolution B, payments of Bills List B from October 22nd, 2025. Motion to pay Bills List B.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Henderson moves. Deputy Director Space, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Abstain.
Number eighteen's personnel. This is Resolution A for Personnel Agenda of October 22nd, 2025. Motion to adopt the Personnel Agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson moves. Commissioner Degru, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Nineteen, administrative report. Lorraine, you are up.
I just want to say it's really nice to see everybody staying in such close contact with all of the areas because as you guys are reporting on everything within each of the departments or divisions, I'm crossing things off my list. So it just shows the active involvement of our commissioners directly with the administration. So I just want to say thank you for that because it makes my life a lot easier going through this. I want to remind everybody by April, or sorry, April, October 31st, that poverty tax relief applications, the PAS1s or the ANCA programs are all due, so really check online if you haven't filed yours to see if you'd qualify. I don't want anybody to miss the opportunity for any type of property relief. The other area is we are now in open enrollment as of October 15th through December 7th. Everybody who is on Medicare should be reviewing their plans to see if they are in the most cost-effective plan for them. I am a counselor within our office. The Division of Senior Services offers assistance and advice to help you go through and check those plans, so please contact our office at 973-579-0555. We can help you go through it. I was sitting with people that came into our office yesterday and training one of our trainees and was able to save the couple $2,000 between the two of them just by reviewing the current plan they have and which plan would be best for them that is in Medicare.gov. You can also go on yourself and look at it if you feel comfortable in doing that, but we offer that advice, and I highly recommend everybody do that every year. You were talking about capital projects and how we're doing more in-house, that we are really have a lot of capital projects going on, some of them in the process of being implemented. Others, we're going back and forth with DEP to ensure we're in compliance with environmental protection. So those workings are going very quickly, and there's open communication. So we do have a lot of projects that are coming up that we see moving forward. We have our caregivers expo tomorrow at the Farmstead Restaurant, Golf Club and Restaurant to learn about services that are available for caregivers. That's from 3:00 to 6:00. We talked about the parade that's happening on November 2nd at 1:00 at the fairgrounds. And tonight, Senior Services is hoping, holding a veterans gathering. We're doing a poker night for veterans, so we had about 20 people show out and show up, and Karen and Ryan from our office were sending me pictures because we had to move it from here to over at the firehouse at Mill Street. So I just want to say the Newton Fire Department, and we're trying to do our outreach to our veterans to show them we're here to support them, provide services, talk about our support group and other services that we have available. So that is what I have on my agenda. Thank you, guys.
Very nice. Thank you. County Council?
No.
All right. Twenty-one, unfinished business, anyone? All right. I do have something. This is the opioid settlement participation resolution with Purdue Pharma. This is just a motion acknowledging the County of Sussex' participation in a nationwide settlement agreement with Purdue Pharma LP and affiliated debtors to resolve claims involving the roles in a country's opioid crisis. Need to, no yay or nay on that?
It's a cleanup resolution.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, it's a roll call resolution.
Roll call? Okay, roll call, please.
So I'll make a motion? I'll make a motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Director Space, second by Commissioner Degru. Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Okay. Number twenty-two is new business. Anybody new business? All right. Number twenty-three, public session from the floor. Public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please on up at the microphone, state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Degru? Deputy Director Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Abstain. Carries. Floor is open.
Good evening. I'm Sam Seaman, Stillwater Township, and I'm here because of two articles in the newspaper. One, the sale of the county jail, and the other because of unhoused Sussex County citizens. So I have a proposal for housing those unhoused Sussex County citizens. For the sale of the jail, one half of the sale of the jail to be set aside for the development of low-cost housing. That none of that be used for consultants. That each township or municipality obligate themselves to have an additional $2 per tax quarter strictly for building low-cost housing. That the county advertise competitive bids for technical schools and colleges such as NJIT to design and build a reproducible prototype of either a temporary low-cost house or something along the lines of granny pods or models such as developed in Germany could be considered. Also, there are available sleeping bags that are battery-operated and/or solar-operated that could, if used properly, could protect the unhoused population from being out in the cold. That land be set aside in the municipalities for developed structures near support such as grocery stores, medical offices, and others. There are things that I've not addressed in this, including the development of training programs, support service, and those things. There's an old saying, if you keep on doing what you're doing, you'll keep on getting what you got. And Sussex County, for a long period of time, has just continued to do what they've been doing as far as the unhoused residents go. And that includes
One minute.
Removing the benches from the park so that nobody has to see the unhoused sitting there. And there was a, I think there was a proposal that benches with divided seats be put in, and so far, there's none put in there. So I would encourage you, you're the commissioners of all the citizens of Sussex County, not just those who are housed, not just those who are, have a working income or retirement income, and I would encourage you to do the right thing as far as the unhoused citizens go and follow this or some other proposal for getting people off the street and to negotiate. Anyone else?
Good evening. Nina Frey, Elmont, New Jersey. Tonight, I'm diving into what Mike Benz, a former State Department official and cyber policy expert, calls a color revolution, a term you've likely heard amid today's political chaos. Benz describes color revolutions as orchestrated campaigns disguised as grassroots uprisings to topple governments, often backed by US agencies like the CIA, USAID, and NGOs such as the National Endowment for Democracy. They're not military coups, but ground bottom-up operations using protests, media, and funding to destabilize leaders labeled autocratic. Benz outlines a clear playbook. First operatives justify intervention by branding a government as a threat to democracy. Think of Ukraine's 2004 Orange Revolution or the 2014 Euro Maiden Revolution, where 65 million in US funds trained activists. Second, they funded astroturf groups, sources, open society, poured 8 million into US protests and 100 million into Ukraine's youth movements. Third, mass mobilization floods streets with symbolic colors or songs like Serbia's 2000 Bulldozer Revolution, creating chaos that looks organic. Fourth, media and tech platforms amplify narratives while censoring opposition. Benz points to Telegram's role in Belarus in 2020. Well, finally, this chaos triggers legal challenges and international pressure, forcing leaders out, often leaving economic ruin, like Ukraine's 15% GDP drop post-2014. Hey, but what's really chilling is Benz warning that this playbook is now domestic.
One minute.
He claims the 2020 Transition Integrity Project, which planned to contest a Trump win, and 2025's No Kings protest, backed by millions from USAID to groups like Indivisible, show a color revolution, American-style. Ben calls it an inversion of democracy where elites weaponize democracy to control narratives, censor speech, and sow division. Sound familiar with today's shutdown and violence and refusal to enforce the law? Benz's evidence, declassified funding documents and NID manuals. He urges us to watch films like Bringing Down a Dictator, to see the script. Whether you agree or not, his framework challenges us to question who's pulling the strings behind protests and power shifts here and abroad. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. I appreciate the trust you have in me, and I'll do everything I can to do sure your trust is down.
Jeff Hull, Beamerville. My wife and myself attended the No Kings rally in Warwick. I listened to Mike Johnson warning of these rallies, quote-unquote. I encourage you to watch who shows up at these rallies. I bet you see pro Hamas. I bet you see Antifa. I bet you see Marcus in full display, the people who do not want to defend the foundational truths of democracy. Senator John Thune also warned against lawlessness, chaos, and crime. At the rally, I was immediately confronted by a female senior citizen who stated, "Welcome to the rally. If you need anything, please find someone with a yellow vest on." Following her was a Vietnam vet handing out American flags and thanking people for attending. My suspicions began to rise. These are probably sneaky Marcus waiting to pounce on us. Mike had warned us. Soon, we were surrounded by inflatable laughing and dancing unicorns, rabbits, and chipmunks. The concern for our safety skyrocketed as they delightfully danced away. Then I took notice of two subversive-looking women with children in strollers, laughing with a man who had a child on his shoulders. Probably suicide bombers, John warned us of the chaos. The crowd was joyful, singing along with female folk singer, probably hate-inspired as Mike had warned. I was a bit relieved when a member of the clergy marched by with a poster, "Save Us." Then, an ugly vision appeared of him performing last rites over our mangled bodies as the inflatables laughed at the chaos and lawlessness. Later at home, I watched as our government responded in an online video of historical significance. I see our president wearing a crown and heroically piloting an F-14 jet named King Trump, dumping feces on those hate-filled American protesters. Props to Mike and John. The clergy was right. Save us.
Just briefly, when I was in Newton
Can you state your name and municipality, please?
Ray DeSoto, Frankfurt Township. I observed about a half hour of that rally, No Kings. And there was a lot of good people, what I call useful idiots, really. But I would like to know how many outsiders were in that rally. Last one, I went three weeks ago, there were like 12 police officers there, and there was only about 50 people. But I just went around and thanked the police for being there, not that there was any violence. But we have a thing in this country against law enforcement. It's unbelievable. Look at New York City. That is our country's city, New York City. We've got a socialist running there, actually a communist. The Democratic Socialist Party, there is no more Democratic Party. Because you would have to, I would go against the Republican Party. That's why I'm independent. I'm a constitutionalist. You would have to go against your own party for what they're doing to this country. You could not be a Democrat right now. You'd have to get independent. When we started this country, our constitution, we were with a constitution that was based on God, divine providence of God. That is our country, and it's our constitution. You don't need to be Christian. You could be Christian, Muslim, or anything you want, but we have a constitution, the laws, and that's what we have to follow. You don't need to follow your spiritual beliefs of any religion. Everybody is welcome here, but we need to follow our laws. Without our laws, we have no country, and we can see what's going on in all these cities. Out of 30 cities, 27 of them, the 30 worst cities, 27 of them are democratic. That says something right there. We need to talk to our fellow citizens. Charlie Kirk, he was assassinated for telling the truth. Charlie Kirk, he was assassinated for telling the truth. But we all need to get out there and have a, a non, not get emotional, be calm and have a discussion about these things, about our constitution. It's hard in New Jersey because the governor of New Jersey has so much power, the Supreme Court, almost everything. He can appoint people and fire people. It's amazing. But we've let it go for a long time. But that's one of the reasons that New Jersey is a democratic state. But this might change in the next election. It was close last time because people are finding out the truth for law and order. That's all I have to say for now.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I was hoping that Commissioner Hayden would be here tonight, but this is typical. I suppose, whether he's here or not, I suppose at this point, it doesn't really matter. I just wanted to give a thanks for the memory speech and go over some of his illustrious career. Thanks for wasting taxpayer money by offering nothing, basically, to the county. Thanks for missing many, too many meetings. Thanks for showing up for meetings and basically saying nothing that you've done for the county. Thanks for wasting time in the reputation of the food pantry. And as you just stated tonight, losing our connection totally with the donor. And thanks for falsely claiming military service, causing embarrassment to not only the county, the state and the nation. And thanks for not stepping down and letting someone else take over and actually doing some work for the county. Thanks for showing no remorse. Thanks for being the only commissioner indicted for tax fraud related to your stolen valor. Thanks for using your position to go after your fellow commissioners, accusing them of stealing money. Thanks for threatening to sue them all at the taxpayer's expense. All in all, you've had, he's had quite a illustrious career as the worst commissioner ever. And I hope he's enjoying that title while he's having to do with his legal issues due to his deeds that he has committed. Thank you.
John Snyder, Sandiston. Try not to use any sarcasm tonight. Going to mention some cities. Memphis, Tennessee, St. Louis, Detroit, Baltimore, Oakland, Little Rock, Arkansas, New Orleans, Cleveland, Houston and Kansas City, Missouri. Those are the top 10 crime cities in the country based on crime rates. What do they all have in common? I stated earlier, they're controlled by the Democrats. Democrat Party, which once was the champion of women's rights. The workplace, sports. The WNBA is an example, I guess, and collegiate women's sports. Now we have a woman, Katanji Brown Jackson, which I guess we're all familiar with, sitting on the Supreme Court. And when she was questioned for her confirmation hearing about could she define what a woman was? And she pretty much said that, you know, that was not her area of expertise. I think most of us in this room could define what a woman is. They talk about women's health. Those are the words they use. What are they really talking about, though? Talking about abortion. I'm not going to say I'm a perfect person and follow what I've done in my life, but for anybody to say that abortion is my primary objective in life. Whoopi Goldberg, she commented on this a couple of years ago. She couldn't remember. "I've had six or seven," she said. Come on, that's accomplishment in your life? In New York and New Jersey, if a woman wants an abortion
One minute.
can have one up to the day of birth. Isn't that something to be proud of as a Democrat? Democrat controlled? Makes me sick, really. The current Democrat Party, anti-Semitic, anti-law and order. Israel, obviously anti-Donald Trump. Because if you pay attention to the news in the last few weeks, leaders from countries all around the world are praising and thanking Donald Trump. His peace-seeking missions, what he's been doing and trying to do. Democratic Socialist of America, quickly. For those of you who remember the Soviet Union, USSR, the Union of Soviet Socialist Republics, the ultimate socialist. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Lake, New Jersey. I'm a Democrat, probably the only one in this room. And I would just like to say that it's been a privilege to watch our committee come, our commissioners come together to solve problems, regardless of the party, regardless of the agenda, whatever. So at some point, stop the name-calling, stop the blaming. Look at the issues, identify them. Put your personal agendas aside, come together, work together to solve the problems for the people that you were elected to serve. So I thank you for your service. I thank you for your open-mindedness. And I would hope that when push comes to shove, we can look beyond the gender, the sexism, the name-calling, the party banning, whatever. Work together because when we start here on the ground level to solve our problems, it will escalate further up the line. I congratulate you on your movements to work with the homeless. I know this was a very sensitive and a very humanitarian issue. You didn't care what the color of the people were, if they were homeless, their gender, their Republican, their Democratic affiliation, but you solved a problem. And that's what I hope you will continue to do. So thank you for that.
Yeah, well, that's why we're here because we lost. But Stillwater Mayor Lisa is one, so congratulations to her. We missed the vote on
Can you just, for the record, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor Anthony Rossi, Vernon Township. I apologize. What are quality management plan for Vernon? Very vital to our economical growth in Vernon Town. Around for probably a decade, so. Sure, I noticed James Baldini is being appointed and I think that's an incredible appointment. I think he'll do. Also, the, we just finished revitalization of town center where we had to utilize our, the county engineers and electricians. So thank you really to those guys. They, sometimes when people talk about government, how things, you know, are a nightmare to work with. They were easier than the vendors. I mean, they were so good. Johnny on the spot with being there to assist us and they got the job done. So again, kudos to those guys, so.
We'll pass that along, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else before we close? Okay. Motion to close the floor for public comment. Return to your business.
So moved.
Second.
Henderson moves. Commissioner DeGru, seconds.
Aye.
Close, abstain, carries. All right, number 24 is reminders. Please check the county's website, www.sussex.hng.us for meeting schedules. Number 25, adjournment. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson moves. Deputy Director Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, carries.